So make the motion to approve the agenda.
On your favor?
Aye.
Item four is approval of meetings of the previous council, and there are four. And we're gonna go one by one. So the first one is the approval of the regular meetings of council for August 9, 2021. I have a motion to approve this. On your favor?
Aye.
Second one is a special meeting of council, August 18, 2021.
I'll second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Approval of meetings of previous council, close meeting of council, August 30th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
On your favor?
Aye.
Approval of meetings of the public hearing, September 7, 2021.
I make that motion.
On your favor?
Aye.
Conflict of interest declarations, any conflicts declared? No conflicts declared. And we're going to delegations, with first delegation being David Armstrong, who's going to address the council on matters of speeding and driver driving.
I first like to just thank the council and mayor for allowing me this time to present this issue. I think it's an important issue that is important for the whole community, all the residents of St. George. So I'll start off with just a few weeks ago, we lost our pet, little Izzy. Little cat, short for Isabella. And she was hit by a car in front of our house on Riverview Avenue about 6:30 in the morning. Garbage day, raining. I just let her out 10 or 15 minutes before that to do her morning business. And when I saw her lying out in the road, I know to pick up her body in the middle of the road and carry it across the street. I knew she must have been chasing a squirrel or something, because she loved to chase mice and bring them all these gifts home to mom and dad and lay them on the front desk, on the front deck. I know that there was no mice or rodent activity anywhere 300 meters from 50 Riverview Avenue, because she had them all on the back deck. That morning was one I won't forget. And when I picked up her lifeless body and carried it across, my foot just hit the curb. And another car come flying over the hill inbound to St. George over that blind hill doing at least 80 to 90 kilometers an hour. And you know, that person did not see me. The music was blaring in his car, I looked right at him. He went by, his brake lights didn't come on. He was oblivious to the fact that I was standing there with her lifeless body in my arms. And that's what happens almost every day of the week in Riverview Avenue. And I shudder to think of the scene that would have unfolded if little Izzy would have been a little girl or little boy running out in the street chasing their ball. Or a senior couple walking across the day adventure center and a car comes over the hill. And unfortunately, we don't have a slide projector tonight, so I can't show you these slides which I had. But the point I'm trying to make is speeding cars put our pedestrians, our cyclists, and other drivers at risk. Speeding drivers are more likely to lose control of their vehicle. Their vehicle requires a longer distance to stop. They are less likely to see someone or something in the road, what happened that morning. And they have less time to react to emergency situations. So I ask the question, how safe does it feel to be a pedestrian on a sidewalk when people are driving dangerously? And I'm going to show you, some people are driving 70, 80, 90, 100, and 110 kilometers an hour on Riverview Avenue. And I suspect that's not only happened on Riverview Avenue, I suspect it's happening all throughout our town. Just picture this for a second. You're walking on the sidewalk. And a car comes down the road within one foot of that sidewalk doing 100 kilometers per hour. How safe do you feel? That's what's happening in our town and all of our streets. I've lived on Riverview Avenue for five years. It's a busy street, it's getting busier every year. Cars, trucks, more and more four-wheelers, more and more dirt bikes are constantly speeding through our neighborhood, residential neighborhood. This has been an ongoing problem that I've been openly discussing for years. Jason probably can confirm that I've been in front of council a few times, brought this issue to the table. I think probably one of those, one of the reasons why it hasn't maybe been addressed, because they haven't had the data to show them that we have a problem. So I took it upon myself to collect traffic data in front of Riverview Avenue to show you we have a serious problem in our community, to the extent that the safety and well-being of our residents are at risk. On June 27th this year, with the help of a company from Toronto, the Stinson Group, I was able to obtain the use of an Armadillo tracker. It's manufactured by Houston Radar, one of the biggest companies in the world for obtaining traffic data. They're very extremely accurate, within 97.5% accuracy. And these are a small sophisticated device, probably about, I'm going to say an Imperial, six inches by six inches by seven inches. They can be placed inconspicuously in any location to record vehicle speed, date, and time of day, as well as vehicle direction. They can record up to four lanes of traffic. So I mounted one in front of 50 Riverview Avenue. And I kept it there for 16 days, 16 days, and collected data. And the numbers are absolutely shocking. Over those 16 days, that checkpoint, we're going to call it the checkpoint, 36,027 vehicles passed by that checkpoint, either inbound to St. George or outbound leading St. George. 36,000 vehicles. I want to reiterate, the speed limit is 50 kilometers per hour on Riverview Avenue. The data collected included vehicle, speed, date, time, and direction. Now this is, I really want you to think about these numbers, and I wish I could have got a screen up here. But out of the 36,000 vehicles, 8,000 were driving within the speed limit of 50 kilometers. I'm going to round these off, 8,024, so 8,000. 16,851 were traveling between 50 kilometers and 60 kilometers. That's 10 kilometers over the speed limit, but we always know that we, when we go on the highway, we set our speed control at 118, 119, we usually let us get away with nine or 10 kilometers. This is the one that I want you to think of. 11,110 vehicles were driving between 61 and 90 kilometers per hour in a 50-kilometer speed limit. 11,110 vehicles were traveling over 60, between 60 and 90. 42 vehicles were driving between 90 and 113 kilometers per hour in a 50-kilometer zone. 42 vehicles driving recklessly, dangerously in our town. Criminal act, police can seize your car, put you in jail. But they're putting the lives of our residents at risk here. And so I just want to kind of give you an overview. In any given day through the week, in a weekday, 2,264 cars traveled over 60 kilometers per hour. An average of 2,200, no, sorry, 2,264 cars traveled a day by the checkpoint. Out of that, 747 cars traveled over 60 kilometers per hour. 700 cars per day breaking the law to the fact it traveled between 60 and 113 kilometers per hour. On a weekday, it dropped slightly, 632 cars were speeding over the 60 kilometers per hour. But the thing I want you to remember here is these vehicles were traveling these speeds in the middle of the day when kids were out playing. July 10th, 10:24 a.m., mid-morning, car traveling 113 kilometers per hour on a 50-kilometer-hour street, residential neighborhood. July 2nd, 2:40 p.m., car traveling 108 kilometers per hour. July 1st, car traveling 101 kilometers per hour at 6:32 p.m. Just think about that, where people are on the sidewalks and cars are traveling 110 kilometers an hour within one foot, two foot, three foot. These are, we're talking about little kids, we're talking about kids with bicycles. Folks, this dangerous and reckless driving is happening when kids are out playing, when people are walking, jogging, and cyclists are on our street. We as residents should not live in constant fear that our kids, our grandkids, our friends, and our pets are going to be run over from a speeding vehicle or someone that loses control of the vehicle. So what's the question we ask? We know we got a problem. Why do we have the problem? Why do we have a problem? 16 days, 11,000 speeders traveling between 60 and 113 kilometers per hour in a 50-kilometer zone, not a ticket position. I was able to get those statistics from the RCMP, not a ticket position. They actually gave me additional information. Over a two-month period, they did have one ticket that was issued and laid out. One ticket. 5,000 vehicles a week, 20,000 a month traveling over 60 kilometers per hour. One ticket. No tickets were issued in the 16 days. Unless we have physical enforcement, we will continue to have dangerous and reckless driving on our streets. Enforcement and not just awareness is needed. Let me give you an example. On Saturday, August 24th, I stood in front of the speed sign that was set up down in front of, near our home at 44 Riverview Avenue, next to 50. I stood there for five minutes. And I took pictures of the speed sign. Because I watched earlier in the day, I know people, some people were just trying to go by that speed sign and see how fast it would register. I know that was happening, and we're down for five minutes. Took pictures, in five minutes, I only took pictures of cars traveling over 60 kilometers. And in five minutes, I had five cars traveling over 60, some at 74, some at 72. One was traveling at 85 kilometers per hour, but I couldn't get the picture because it came on and went off the screen so fast, it wouldn't, I couldn't get the picture fast enough. 85 kilometers per hour. Speed signs may help with distracted drivers. So I'm a distracted driver, sometimes, you know, we went to these neighborhoods in St. John, we're doing an inspection, all of a sudden the speed sign, you know, I'm thinking about something else, I look down, I'm doing 60 in a 50 or 60 in a 40. And strobe lights hit you and your foot goes on the brake, you know, it wakes you up, for sure. And they do help. But reality is, when there's no enforcement, drivers will do what they like. How can we get drivers to slow down and make our streets safe for all users? And when I say all users, I'm talking about bikers, I'm talking about cyclists, I'm talking about kids. I'm talking about a kid eight years old driving their bike down the street. And I'm talking about an 80-year-old in a wheelchair. What can we do to make our streets safe again? Well, there's several options. Some work better than others. Some come with big costs, some come with little cost. You know, there's a stationary speed sign, similar to, this is a portable one on the trailer that Jason uses sometimes in our town. You know, that might help. There's flashing caution signs, we can, we can put up more speed signs to remind people, watch for children signs. Portable speed humps, they work in some towns, some areas. We could take the expensive route, buy a couple of these portable radar cameras. They mail you the ticket in the mail. We could demand the RCMP issue a minimum of 50 tickets a week. They should be able to do that, there's, there's 4,000 people breaking the law over 60 kilometers. 50 tickets wouldn't be unheard of. I mean, all these options have advantages and disadvantages. And they all help. But there's nothing that can replace the need for physical speed enforcement. What is physical speed enforcement? Is consequences for drivers who are not respecting our community. Tickets need to be issued to send a clear message to those who are driving recklessly and dangerously in our town. There is one option which can provide immediate, effective results. The town could hire their own part-time peace officer. I didn't say police officer, peace officer, part-time. The Motor Vehicle Act states that a peace officer can enforce and issue motor vehicle violations. Peace officers, I'll give you an example of who they are. With the Department of Public Safety fulfill a variety of roles. They work as conservation officers, natural resources, forest rangers, off-road vehicle enforcement officers, commercial vehicle enforcement officers, general investigators, correction officers, sheriff officers. And they are empowered to enforce the criminal code as well as pieces of provincial legislation.
David, if I can interrupt for a second, I would like to wrap up your delegation in half an hour. So we have another eight minutes, if you, if you want.
I can do it in eight minutes.
Okay.
Imagine if we had one of these folks. Could even be a retired RCMP officer, or maybe an active police officer in a St. John. Or a natural resources officer who wants to make a bit of extra money. He or she has their own car, we supply the radar gun. We hire that person for one day or two days a week. And that officer just moves around, patrols our streets, neither issues tickets or issues warnings. And I am 100% guaranteeing that within 30 days, if you hire that person for a couple of days a week, within 30 days, they'll reduce the speed situation in this town by 25%. And I bet you within a month, by, could possibly be, or 90 days could possibly be 75%. I don't believe there's any other comparable cost-effective method in reducing dangerous driving than a hands-on speed enforcement program. So councilors, this data shows that there's an excessive number of individuals driving at excessive speeds on our streets. We need this to stop. As citizens and taxpayers, we have a right to live in a community where we feel safe while enjoying our neighborhoods. And municipalities have a duty to take reasonable care to ensure the safety of their residents and guests. We don't want our town to be found negligent in providing safe streets for our citizens. So my question to you, do you think it's important to take action to decrease, decrease the number of drivers speeding excessively through our town? And if yes, what can you do to help in this effort? And I'll close by, it's too late to save little Izzy from a speeding car. But it's not too late to save that young person who might be flying out onto the street chasing a ball. Or a teenager who's showing off for their friends, pushing their friend or something. Or a cyclist, or a couple enjoying an afternoon walk. So I urge you as councilors, let's do what needs to get done to address this speed issue in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Just want to do two things, first to compliment you for the quality of this submission. It was an excellent submission. This public has conceded, but it's an excellent submission. And I just, just because we had previous discussions about what you had presented, and I have brought them up to our CIO and we have discussed them within the, within the council. So Jason, if you want to actually spend maybe, maybe two or three minutes to actually respond to some of the things that we have done. I don't want to have a debate, I just wanted to tell you that we are taking it seriously and we have done some things already. And we definitely want to look at this, that we have already done a few things, so.
Well, we have installed radar trackers, trail ourselves, so you have data. That's how we have CP, so they're aware not just of Riverview Avenue, but also of the streets in town. We've also had one of the commonwealths with the RCMP meet with council just recently. They've come down to see with council, and I think somehow, if I was the president, I don't know, the other staff members was there. But I think the question did come up about municipal, municipalities hiring peace officers. I don't think that we could circumnavigate the policing act in order to do that, so. So there are some things that we're doing, or certainly, certainly, you know, I think with this, take this presentation, send it to RCMP, certainly ask them some of these questions as well about increasing the speeding tickets. We can't, I don't know if it's, we could actually ask for a quota to be issued or anything like that on speeding tickets. I don't think the policing act allows us to, to request quotas. But certainly we'll, we'll bring that up and we'll raise these questions with them to get some, some answers, so. I know some other municipalities like Oremockville have hired services, but it's more or less security guard services, they don't have the ability to pull anyone over. And it's more for just property protection, just as sort of a security guard, that's all they can do, so. Outside of an RCMP or municipal police service, I don't know of any other municipal police or municipalities that are hiring, you know, maybe, you know, members of the public, public safety of the province. I'm not sure if that's even an option, if we can, you know, ask the Department of Public Safety if they could, I guess, hire out their officers, they would be, they would be peace officers. So certainly questions that we'll, we will ask.
Yeah, this town can hire.
Because I talked to the assistant commissioner today, the gentleman we met, Larry Tronley, and he said the town could hire a peace officer, such as you said, you know, a forest ranger or not the conservation officer, and they'd have the authority to serve a ticket under the municipal vehicles, that motor vehicle act. But this would have to be sanctioned by the province Department of Public Safety, so we have, we couldn't just go out and hire one, we have to have the Department of Public Safety say it's okay. And he suggested that we, the concept is there, we just need to follow it up and see where we go from there. So the idea is, and he said in the meantime, he'd see what he can do to highlight the fact that St. George would like to have more patrols for speeding. I spoke to him this morning, so it's, you know.
There is case law throughout Canada that.
It's possible, he just said we'd have to do a little bit more research.
We don't, we don't argue with what you say.
No, no, no.
She brings a fact back, we have already started looking into it and we're gonna, we will not, we will not just put this thing on the file, we'll do something and, and you will hear back from us. Because it's one of the, of the things which came in two RCMP meetings that we had. One was with the senior commander in Fredericton, and the other is with our local, I don't know what.
Staff sergeant.
Staff sergeant. So it's something that we have been following the last month and a half. And with this data, Jason is going to go back and say, what can we do immediately, in the short term, like next week, and what can we do that may require more processes? Any other councilor who wants to add something, yes?
One of the issues that I was identified in my campaign was to slow the traffic down. And David's presentation clearly shows that we as a community, we do have a problem with speeding. And when I was talking with residents during the campaign, it's not just Riverview Avenue. It was Hillcrest subdivision, they called it the Indy 500, Campbell Hill, Mount Pleasant, Fundy Bay Drive, Main Street, Clark Street, and it just, the list goes on and on. So David took the initiative to gather some, some of these facts, and the facts are shocking. So our role as councillor, I believe, is to serve the interest of the community, to provide the services and facilities the council, council may see necessary, to develop and maintain safe and viable communities. So I'd like to make a, I'd like to move, to make a motion that we maybe set up an ad hoc committee to, with the mandate, to search out and develop a plan that is sustainable and within the perimeters of the law to slow the traffic down. This may include multiple opportunities, for example, pilot projects, infrastructure grants, equipment grants, wage subsidies. And I would like certainly to extend the invitation to David. Armstrong is the spearhead for this ad hoc committee, committee under the Public Safety Committee, with the objective, with that objective in mind, and to bring back to council in an agreed-upon timeline for review and action. Did I do that right?
Yeah.
I'd second that.
Questions about this motion?
I would second that.
Any questions?
Discussion?
Discussion, yes, please.
Concerning the topic?
Concerning the motion, that's put forward. Yes. So actually, before we, before we go into putting it on the floor, I was trying to see if there are any questions that people want to ask. Are there any?
Yes.
Can you ask a question?
In this roundtable discussions through committee to find out what we want to know before we can. before we come back to the public. Have to do our research on certain things we have to find out. There's a couple of key points that he mentioned that are iffy.
So if I, if I, if I understand, Councilor Ruben's point is that before we put this thing, that I understand that what you are proposing is to table it until we get the opportunity to a committee to actually review it.
No, I have no problems in having committee. For that, for that purpose of discussion to move forward.
So you, you, you are ready to actually put the thing on the vote? The motion to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So any other?
Any questions?
No? No? Okay. So it has been moved, has been seconded? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please, most can pass. How do you record it? Have you recorded the motion to vote? Okay. As you know, I had a previous meeting on this. So thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. We have a second delegation from the Granite Town Garden Club, and Rod Kraluski is going to have a floor.
Mayor and councillor, I think he, most of you is over here. I'm here on behalf of the Granite Gardeners here in St. George. We're a nonprofit club that has meetings. We used to have meetings in this hall for quite a few years after it was built. And then we moved over to this high school, and we were wondering if we as a club, as a nonprofit, could come back to have meetings here. And once a month, every, for about eight, eight months, probably, we do it? About approximately eight months and of the year. And we set up and tear down everything and put it back the way it was. And we were just wondering if we could come back to doing it here, probably when this COVID's over, probably in January, hopefully. Not, not right away, and of course, everything is still kind of up in the air. We're just wondering if we could have a chance to come back here the way it was when we were here three years ago. Three years ago? Yeah, approximately three years ago. I got a dawn on my back. There's approximately 25 members, and we have people come here and show different things, mushrooms and, and not the magic stuff, but mushrooms, how to grow mushrooms. And we have people come in and play it. So we've had the people come from Lincoln here and show us, bring plants in here. And one of the reasons is that door and the parking lot is nice and close. So we bring stuff in, we can show it and take it back out. At the high school, we're on the second floor, and it's a very small area. And we would just like to have something, I don't even know why we left originally. I don't know why we were left, but anyways, that's where we went. And we just wondered if we could come back here again. I leave it with this?
I want to follow up on what you said.
Any questions?
Yes, any questions that I have for? I have, I have, you have, you have a question?
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
I just, I just want to tell you that not only we, 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 we welcome your presentation today, but we are in the process of actually making this, this building here, which is a community center, more available to community groups like the gardening club. So your proposal comes in a time, in a timely spot. Because we are just discussing how we can actually make this place more accessible and more used, okay? And I had spoken to the CEO about this thing, so I, I, I'm gonna put a, unless there are any questions, I'm gonna put a, 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 a motion on the, on the, on the floor for actually accepting, to actually allow the garden club to use this, this, this place once a month as they used to do three years ago. Any seconded?
Did you make the motion?
Yes, you made the motion, yes.
Oh, okay, then I'll second it.
All in favor?
I thought your dad would make the motion.
No, 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 no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad we resolved it so fast. I'm moving on to the section seven of general reports, and we have the general governor report. Jason?
Thank you, Worship. Some updates for council. Residents, line number six, the new well has been commissioned and is now offline at the new well, Riverview Avenue. Water tower, basically due to some water issues this summer, we've been installing a dialer, an onsite dialer as a contingency for the water tower issue. So we had an outage with the water tower. This would be like a contingency backup dialer that will alert town staff if the water tower goes offline. Lower bridge sewage line installation work, we continue to work on finalizing some quotations on this project. We are, we do have some communication lines open with the Department of Transportation as well on requirements from their end, so from the provincial land, provincial perspective, what is, what do they need to, for this work to be completed? In the past, we've done things such as, as load tests, and we just need to understand what, what they need. So I think once we finalize the, the method of how we're gonna fix this sewage line and what that looks like, then we'll be contacting them with the details. Canal Beach, the beach schedule will be closed next week, and we are expecting to commence construction of the rebuild project at that time. Coastal Link Trail, due to the time in which the permitting and the AIA report will take to prepare, the project will unfortunately not construct this year. Pending the AIA results, the project will be tendered over the winter months, February, March, and construction will start in May of 2022. Splash pad, the splash pad officially, unofficially opened on August the 20th. Landscaping has since been completed. Splash pad will close September the 20th and go through a winterizing process. The official opening ceremony will take place in June 2022. Also have a, likely a news release coming up this month as well. And that news release will thank the various donors that have helped this project along. Roadwork section of in front of Dennis Hall's and Main Street is expected to finally be completed over the next few weeks, we've just been waiting for a milling, a miller to come and mill the road in that area. There are also a number of patch areas to be fixed as well from some water work. Speed radar sign is a part of a promotion from since the limited, we will be installing a free trial speed sign on the Riverview over the coming weeks as soon as we, the device is received. The provincial government, the Department of Local Government has released their What We Heard document on local government reform, which is available on gnb.ca. The department will host a community roundtable discussion at the Lions Club in Penfield on September the 22nd at 6:00 PM. Space is limited. Water and sewage payments, residents can now pay water and sewage bills through Service New Brunswick online. School zones, with school back in session, the RCMP is reminding motors that fines for speeding in, in the school zones are failing to stop for school buses range from $340 to more than $1,200. For residents complaint, we've had a number of residents complaints about ATVs on public streets and walking trails, just to remind ATV users that ATVs are not permitted on the streets in St. George. For the town hall, we had some floor drain issues last week. We were experiencing some blockages in the floor drain. So that took a little bit of work with some hydrovacuuming and work from Hannah's pumping. The town is looking to establish a COVID-19 testing vaccination policy for staff. Pretty much following the city of St. John and working with, with our town solicitor on finalizing that policy we brought forth to council. And for events, council and residents are reminded that NB Power EMO is having an open house at One McAdavis Drive this Thursday. That starts at 6:00 PM, and Thursday the 16th, so that's One McAdavis Drive in the industrial park. That's all I have to report, your worship.
Thank you. Any questions?
For the splash pad?
Not with me, but I could get that.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, and let's move on to fire report.
Good evening. Work for the month of September. Anybody have any questions before I? No? All right, we'll talk, and then maybe you'll have some questions. For the month of August, we responded to five incidents. None of the incidents were in town, so all five were outside of town. Three motor vehicle accidents, one structure fire, and one ambulance assist. Slow month in terms of average numbers, but that tends to balance out over time. We won't talk about that and jinx ourselves. Training, I mentioned when working on accessing some training for a portable gas meter, and I think I've found a viable option for that, so I'm gonna follow up with that. TMR radio system, there's a word missing, that should say TMR radio system training needs to occur. Steps should be taken to sign a contract with St. John Police Department's PSAT for regional fire dispatch, and once that contract is in place, that will initiate the training. Just a little bit more on that. Currently, St. George Fire is dispatched by St. Stephen Fire, that will come to an end at the end of the year. At this time, there are only four municipalities being dispatched, so of St. Stephen, St. Stephen, St. Andrews, St. George, and Blacks Harbor. All of the LSD fire departments have already made that switch, so I'll follow up with Jason on that. The equipment's in place as far as what goes in the building. The radios and whatnot that will come with joining regional fire dispatch aren't in place, so we're getting at the, at the point where we're gonna have to, unfortunately, we're gonna have to move on that. St. Stephen is going to be, wasn't certain the exact date, but it, we're gonna, we're gonna be shutting that down, so. So we all have to move on. Equipment, two attack line nozzles were purchased and a repair kit is on back order for an, for an existing one. I'm still waiting for quotes on portable radios and pagers. I will note that with my other department, I put in an order, I believe, nine or 10 months ago, and they just arrived today. So I'm not hopeful that even if I get a price, we'll get them this year, but perhaps the suppliers brought in a supply rather than... Normally in the past, they'd keep these things on the shelf, you'd call and say, I need three pagers, and by the end of the week, they would arrive, but just like cars or anything that has a microchip in it, they seem to be hard to get, so we'll see, we'll see what we can do. Also, I mentioned helmets, gloves, hoods, these are things we buy every year. As I mentioned, they wear out, they time out. So I'll, I'll get some of that stuff. We'll see how, how, how well delivery times are on that. And I mentioned a laptop that's being, that's being dealt with. I'd like to highlight some of the events, there was a lot of activities around the county and around the province in general after the province went to green. So firefighters assisted St. Andrews Fire Department and Eastern Charlotte Regional with their fireworks in Blacks Harbor. We escorted the Little People's Parade, we sent a truck down to the Fog Fest Parade in Blacks. And we also attended the Hometown Hero Ceremony, which got interrupted by a car accident. But that's, that's typical, anytime we try to do anything like that. As a note, at that ceremony, Captain Scott Dugan received his 15-year service pin from the Province of New Brunswick. Scott's career started with Blacks Harbor, and he eventually moved to St. George and joined St. George. And I can remember having conversations with Scott prior to him becoming a firefighter, and I remember encouraging to do so. Ralph Eldridge was awarded the Governor General Medal for 20 years of service, as well as the David B. Boyd Medal for 20 years of service with SGFD. I should note that Ralph has an excess of probably 40 years in total. Unfortunately, records back in the day weren't very, weren't very well kept, and I shouldn't say that. Not very easily accessible or to be found. So he, he's entitled to more than what he's, he's received. And we're working on seeing if we can get him acknowledged for the full years of service that he's given. Joe and Paul Burdan were both awarded their Governor General Bar, which is 30 service, 30 years of service, they get a bar that goes on their 20-year medal. So that's a big accomplishment, 30 years in the fire service, there's, there's not many of us that, that do that. Should be noted. And finally, I, I guess not finally, I'd like to mention Chaplain Marion Jammer. She's actually one of my firefighters with St. Stephen Fire Department, but she acts as the chaplain for the entire Fundy Firefighters Association, which is all of the fire departments in, in Charlotte County and a little bit beyond. She also does that for the, for the RCMP, for pretty much the whole province, and as well for Charlotte County Ground Search and Rescue and Ambulance New Brunswick. And in addition to that, I'm quite sure she is the national president of her association. So Marion is very, very, very involved in all the things related to what a chaplain would do in, in our, in our world. And not to mention all the people that we encounter along, along the way, she, she tends to deal with them as well. So very, very worthy recipient of that, that award. In addition, Deputy Mayor Barry Brainerd, pharmacist Keith Hoyt, and Constable Charles Gonye also received hometown hero awards for their contribution. So it was a good ceremony, as I mentioned, got interrupted by 15 pagers going off and cell phones, but that's, that's the way it goes, so. If anybody had any questions about any of those things or anything else?
Once you go to the TMR system, you're gonna maintain the standby system you have now?
Yes, actually, actually, yes, we, we will be, at least for the near future, maintaining both systems. TMR is for dispatching and for inter-agency communications. In other words, if we want to talk with the ambulance or, they sold it as if you want to talk to anybody that's on TMR. Although I will say, it's not as easy as they make it say, sound, you have to call and request to be changed to this channel or that channel, and, and it's not just, it's not simple. It's not impossible, and if, but I, I believe with the RCMP, it is impossible because theirs is encrypted and, and ours isn't, but I could be wrong about that. But you have to jump through some hoops to make that happen. And in all reality, you know, the number of incidents in the run of a year where you'd even need that are miniscule. It sounds like it's a big important thing, but it's not nearly as important as the everyday communications for, you know, whatever happens. The other, the other 158 or 180 calls that we go to a year where we don't need that, who cares?
So department, department?
Even department, department, it's, there, there are some pros to this. The coverage area is a good thing, there are parts of the province where other systems, including St. Stephen, we have terrible coverage in around town, and then the ridges with the existing system. They say the TMR is gonna improve that. But there are disadvantages such as we can only listen to one channel at a time. We can no longer scan what's going on on the other channels. Our operational channels are different than our dispatching channels, so somebody's gotta be listening to a dispatch channel. You know, it's gonna be a new way of doing things, it's gonna mean the people in my position carrying two, maybe three radios and monitoring them and making sure they're on the right channels. And so it's, it's an improvement, I guess.
More expensive.
A lot more expensive, that should be noted, what cost us, you know, 10 or $11,000 a year is now gonna be probably 25 or better. The operators on the other line are not local. Very professional, you know, very good at what they do, I'm not, not saying that, but you know, they won't know what, what our local people know. There, there's gonna be some, some growing pains with it, just like any change. And you know, when we switched to St. Stephen from Blacks Harbor, there was growing pains. When, when we switched, switched from local people answering the telephone, one of which was in my home, to, to Blacks Harbor, there was growing pain, so you know, it, it will, it is what it is. So, you know, it will, it is what it is.
I want to pick up on one thing that you mentioned about the cooperation of the fire departments when it comes to fireworks. Is there any kind of agreement between the different towns to coordinate support for firework protection? I'm saying that because as we dealt with that question for this year, and we have to deal with that next year. So is there any agreement? So for example, to sequence, to have different days for fireworks, so everybody who has to be there, to be there? Or is there any agreement between the fire departments of St. Andrews and Blacks Harbor to provide support during fireworks?
Well, I will say that first, the fire departments don't determine the dates. That's the people around these tables and their committees that set the dates. As far as cooperation, it's like everything we do. Whether it's firefighting, car accidents, whatever, there's a limited group of people available, and fireworks is no different. You have to have licenses and training and whatnot in order to do that, even to set up. So, and it's gotten more and more complicated. Most of these things are wired and whatnot, so not, you know... And they're time-consuming. Like the show that we put on in here in St. George, it's a two-day event setting that up. So yes, there is cooperation. Is it written? No. It's, you know, our show's on this date. If you can come help, great. And that's how we do it. And that's how we've done it for as long as we have been doing it. It's always been a... There's a certain number of shows in the county, and there's a certain number of people that know how to do it, and we're distributed amongst all of the departments, really.
You got a question? Thank you very much.
Alright, you're welcome.
Moving on to building and planning report from the Southwest Municipal Service Commission. Alex?
Thank you, your worship. SMBSC participated in a council public hearing on hearing objections related to bylaw 25B-2102. It's a bylaw to repeal and replace the zoning map for the town of St. George. So I was there with you all and heard some of the comments related to that bylaw. Council may proceed to the third and final reading of this bylaw. Council could look at doing additional changes to it if it wanted, but that would have to be resent for further technical considerations from PrAC per Section 110 of the Act. As per other reports, we are continuing working on background research for the St. George Municipal Plan, so that work continues. We met with the town CEO to discuss municipal considerations around a proposed one-lot subdivision off Main Street. This is just a property that had limited frontage, and so looking at some of the possibilities with that. So Jason met with G. Hartford, who is a senior development officer and basically looks after most subdivision applications. Development update. To date, there's been 17 building permits issued. Total value exceeding $14 million. There's been 22 development permits issued, and that total value is $1.6 million. So looking at this, that $16 million new construction value to date, very significant. So it represents high levels of investment in St. George. Does relate particularly to three different applications. Mostly, but there's been a large amount of development other than that as well. Two subdivisions have been approved to date, and no changes related to signed permits. So if anybody has questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions? If you have the figure in your head, out of the $16 million new permits, how many of them are residential, how many of them are commercial? Do you have any sense?
Mostly, they're residential. So I have the stats with me here. Yeah, mostly, we're dealing with residential development. In terms of commercial, it is not very significant. The two which were the largest were two industrial permits, but the rest, the remainder is primarily residential type.
Okay, thank you, Alex. You got any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 7D, water issue report.
Thank you, your worship. Average daily water consumption for August was 1,563 cubic meters for a total of 48,470 cubic meters. There was no coliform or E. coli reported. Water levels are low, especially with well number four. Routine service box replacement on Brunswick Street resulted in two one-inch lines being pulled from the main, causing some major excavation work to be done and a temporary boil order to be issued. A water break occurred on Riverview Avenue in the vicinity of well six back in August the 13th. It was a 75, it was 75 inches from the last break, should be inches. A boil order advisory was also issued for that break. Well six is expected to be commissioned on August the 31st, which it was. Approval to operate has been given from the Department of Environment. We only need the Department of Health to sign off on the startup. We have begun planning construction of well two upgrade, and will begin after the new well six is online. The existing well inside the building will be filled in, and new well outside will be piped in. Also, a standby generator will be installed on the south side of the building and powered by natural gas. Lagoon results are good for August. Requirements for the residential lagoon, number one, are 25 out of 25 CBODs, TSS, and the industrial lagoon, number two, is the 30/30 CBOD, TSS, and chart has been also included in the report. That's all I have, your worship.
Questions?
I have one. It was noted in last month, in the minutes, that I had asked the question in regards to what is a reasonable amount of time from start to finish in getting the road work completed? And the answer that you gave me was like that you would like to fix more than one area at a time. So July 28th, the first break happened. August 13th, the second break happened. The first break has not been repaired in 48 days. The second break has not been repaired in 30 days, which gives an overlap of days. So my questions are very simple. What is a reasonable amount of time? I asked if 10 days was reasonable. I'm asking why does it take so long? And am I beginning to think that, you know, are we able to do the work ourselves in-house? Or is it something that we should maybe contract out so that we're not putting the residents at risk? The one on Riverview Avenue in particular, individuals have to cross over onto the oncoming traffic to go around the break, which puts them at risk. And the municipal act clearly states that part of our role and responsibility is to keep the roadway in a reasonable state of affairs, in repair, so that the users of the roadway exercising ordinary care may travel safely. That's not happening, not on either one for that matter. The shoulder is so rough. If you ever lost control, you'd have a problem there. On Brunswick Street and Riverview Avenue, you have to literally go over into the oncoming traffic. So my question is, is the cost of the pavement, a load of pavement, more expensive than the risk of having a claim or a lawsuit against the community?
If you look for an answer, I can't answer that. I don't...
Okay. Because we could find ourselves in a situation of neglect by leaving them open that long. So my next question is, should we have a policy or a bylaw that would address this issue?
Could be. We could have it under a traffic bylaw or under the water sewage bylaw. You know, whenever there's a water main break, it has to be fixed back to pre-break conditions in a certain amount of time, certainly.
Could I make a motion to develop such a bylaw?
To update the current bylaw?
So I would make a motion to update the bylaw?
So I'll have to bring that forward, and it has to go through, it'll have to go through to usually committee.
We can make a motion to actually put this, your proposal to the advisory committee that we have for roads and sewers. Public works, yes, public works.
Public works.
Public works. That is what they're getting paid to do, right? So just kidding. They can give us some advice on if that is something that... We'll need to do some research before we actually know the form of what that bylaw may be. So I will, I will, I will, I will... I just want to say as a comment that maybe we should not be voting on passing a motion for, to have a bylaw, but we should be passing a motion to bring your proposal to the advisory committee, to be reviewed. Because I personally, I don't have the information to assess what you said. I have not been informed about what you have, what numbers you put forward. So I feel a bit, a bit, I don't know if the other councils have received that information beforehand.
No.
Okay, so... Is there a motion?
I'm making, I'd like to make a motion that we develop a policy or a bylaw to address the issue. I'm not sure where it fits at this time, but it would be under public safety or it would be under the roads? The highway are... Public works. Yeah, it would be under public works. Under public works, yes. The committee provides advice to the town on matters related to road and sidewalk construction, maintenance, and on water and sewage issues. So I'll make a motion that we would develop a bylaw in regards to a timeline from start to finish on a water main break, including the pavement.
I have a problem to actually putting on the floor motions which we don't have either previously or even now, a copy of the text of what we are actually moving. I may be a bit slow, but I would have liked to have that motion, which is a very, very complex motion about what we ought to do. I can understand the subject, I can understand the subject, but the specific proposal, unless I have it in front of me, I cannot vote. And I think this is a legitimate concern that we should all have. So I don't know how others feel about questions or points.
I mean, I do agree with Leslie, I mean Counselor Armstrong, sorry. I do agree with you, the roads have to be a little bit better. I went around that today, and if you, if you're not paying attention and someone comes around that turn and swings out, there could be a very bad accident there. Yes, there could. I do agree that, but we don't... When they do the roads, if I'm understanding this right for mercy, is that when they pave the roads, they bring enough in to pave the roads all at one time? They just don't do one spot and then come back and do another spot? Is that right, Jason, or am I... So we're gonna really have to look at that, and that should go back to the committee to look at and bring forth back answers on how we could do that. That's my opinion.
Or I would make a different motion, so I'm not gonna call again.
Oh, you wanna make a motion?
I would make a different one.
Okay, so let's table it, let's table it, and let's hear, you say it's a completed motion?
Is that correct? To table her motion or drop it?
There's a motion on the floor. You've said a motion, you wanna continue with the motion? So what should we do?
I'm willing to hear, I'm willing to hear is...
My motion would be to take it to committee and then advise, counsel advise, and then move forward with it. You have a legitimate complaint too, by the way, 'cause I've watched it all the time. And it needs to be, I think, go the committee route and then make the recommendation.
And who can put that, anyone wants to move?
I'll make that motion.
So on favor? You have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Jason, I got a questionable, well, number two, rebuild, upgrade. There's the update with the pricing. There's quite, there's quite a jump there, two or three of them.
Yes, I saw a few business.
Okay. All I know, thank you.
I have a supplementary question on the same topic before I move to the next one. You mentioned that as a general statement that wells are low.
Well, number four, yes.
Number four only. Not just a general statement that wells are low.
No, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, clarification. Okay, so we move on to 7E, transportation report.
Thank you, your worship. Transportation report for August. A lot of the month was consumed by work on the splash pad, which is now finished and operating. This included installation of the storm sewer, topsoil, sod, as well as gravel driveway into the building. Staff were trained on the basics of the operation and maintenance. At the end of the month, we were busy preparing for the festival, including pickup, returning a U-Haul and musical make-for-music portion. Railings were repaired at the Eagles Nest and the old tourist bureau after some vandalization. The building at the Day Adventure Center was cleaned out once again, and the businesses on Main Street, the businesses on Main Street were trimmed in front of them, so there's some trimming on Main Street. And the rails being painted at the post office. The summer students will be done on the 3rd of September, so we will have to take over the garbage and watering and mowing with regular staff until we're all done with summer projects. A number of issues with the veterans' bandstands were repaired. Before and during the festival, the stairs and the railing were repaired. Braces were added to the roof uprights to make it more stable. New fence was installed on the east side of the playground at J. O. Spiny Drive, and the section of fencing in the ball dime that was removed for the previous outdoor rink was replaced. Plastic cover was replaced on the top of the ball diamond fence. Speed trailer was once again deployed on Riverview Avenue in Mount Pleasant for two weeks each. A new for sale sign, lease sign, was installed at the vacant lot on Brunswick Street. And no wake signs were installed at the north of the Day Adventure Center on the Riverview, on Macadam River. Painting of the center line was done the second week of August, and we repainted crosswalks before school zones, as well as crosshatches and arrows in front of the high school. We also painted catch basin markers before the winter months arrived. Grav banners were taken down in the first month, the first week of the month. The bleachers at the Day Adventure Center are now completed after new angle iron was welded into the place and the planks were reinstalled. That's all I have for transportation report, worship.
What happened at the Eagles Nest, and did we ever find out who did it?
No. No, we, it looked like it was just the banister, their handrail, and it was kicked out.
They just kicked it out?
Yeah.
You got a question?
Back on the minutes of June 14th, we had a conversation in regards to a Main Street camera and a bridge camera. And at that time, we were going back to get some pricing on how... What's the status on that?
So we've received some information from Telus. It was pretty much an exorbitant amount of money, $700 to set up, which they don't set up, $120 per camera per month. Really, that's not something that we're looking at doing, and really, we would need to have a Wi-Fi zone to support that. So we don't have a Wi-Fi zone, so it was a moot point. So we're looking at establishing some lines of sight for internet so we can get cameras hooked up. So that's sort of what we're doing right now. Is looking at trying to establish a Wi-Fi zone in the greater part of the town.
Were the police called?
For.
For the vandalism?
Yep, they were, yeah.
And a report filed?
I'm not sure if a report was filed. We don't get copies of the reports.
Just want to actually, for the public record, to follow up on the comment on the work that has been done to reinforce the bleachers still, who had been very... Counselor Rubin had also noticed it when he did an inspection. So we, that was an important thing. And I want to acknowledge the contributions from the JDI who helped us with the new pressure-treated lumber for the wood of the bleachers. And Keith's Building Supplies provided the paint to actually repaint them. Supplies provided the paint to actually repaint them. So, I think it's important to, to, to acknowledge them here and thank them. If there are no other questions, we can move to item eight, I think, bills paid and payable in principle to August 31st in the amount of $175,000 and $243. $175,243. Any questions about the bills paid and payable? Or I, I, is there any, any specific summary you want to make before, sorry, here? Any questions?
Page two of five. Four six zero two two. Two fifty eight fifty eight, sign repair. Can you? Why did we repair that sign?
So, the crosswalks, number bridge, the, there were some cables that were ripped out of the crosswalk beacon.
The one below it.
And wholesale sign repair. So, over here?
Yeah.
The sign was, the, the, when we were doing work over there a couple of years ago, we ended up taking out the, the light where the conduit was in that area.
Good, thank you.
Um, any signs of past settlements?
Oh, they had, okay. It's about one.
Does this stay on year-round?
Uh, no, it shuts off.
But we still pay $27 a month?
Yeah, yeah, instead of shutting off the, uh, the power, we'll keep the power on.
Any natural gas, is that one for you?
What's that?
Natural gas, like, even if not using it?
Yes.
Just have a chance.
The, on, um, August 31st planter box, the planter flowers from canned to green, what did we pur, what flower planters did we purchase?
Uh, August the 31st?
It's number four six oh five four.
Let's page four.
Don't recall at this moment, I don't.
Pardon me?
I don't recall, I don't, planter flowers.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Someone from the town purchased flowers to put in the planters by birches?
That's right. Yes, yeah, so that was out, out towards birches, out on Brunswick Street as you entered the town.
And I also believe on Main Street as well.
Yes, yeah, there was some.
Not the baskets.
There were some areas around town that we, that we updated with flowers, so.
The look and tell auto, so we go to the bucket truck?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we ever gonna put out the, for the cleaning for the medical center, are we ever gonna put that out to tender?
Um, we, we don't control who, we, we pay, they, so they agree with the, with the, with the medical centers and will pay for the medical, but he's actually, it's a staff of the, of the mall. So, it's sort of an agreement that we have that we'll pay for that, for the medical cleaner.
So, the mall, so the gentleman who purchased the mall?
He would decide who does that.
He would decide who does that?
Yes.
So, the cleaning is all part of the maintenance?
Yes. Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Worship just need a motion to?
So, I'm gonna make a motion, yes, I need a motion for the approval of the bills paid and payable, August 31st, in the amount of $175,243.83.
I'll second it.
Have two, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, item eight and nine A, resolution of council, a motion, third and final reading by title only, of bylaw twenty-five B twenty-one zero-two, amending the zoning bylaw for the town of St. George by repealing the zoning map for the municipality Schedule A and replacing with zoning map Schedule A one.
I'm still afield on that, I'm sorry, I...
Any questions? Any, any points to be brought up? Councilor Allison, do you have any, any?
I just, I just feel that the town did wrong at the beginning, and now we're trying to cover it over, but the people did not even know that that even happened to them. And I just feel that, I just, I just feel that it's not right. I feel that we should have at least sit down with them as a council and talk to them and really get a feeling on how they really feel.
We did have a hearing.
I realize that, your worship, but what I'm saying though, my feeling is that they were not told ahead of time, and once they realized it, it was too late. And I just feel that we owe them to meet with them and talk to them. That's my viewpoint.
So, what you're proposing, any motion about, like you propose to put to table it?
I, I feel that we should table it till next meeting and then, so that will give us time to meet with them, yes.
So, how, I, I just want to make sure that we had a process that?
I don't say not to cancel the process, I just wanna meet with them so that we're all on the same page, and they're not hurt and we're not hurt, and it, it was just done wrong, and I just feel that we need to hear how they really feel. And we really, they came, they spoke, but I feel that we still owe them a talk.
A talk, so essentially, just so I can understand what you're proposing, because we had that, all the parties that were affected have been notified by, by mail, and we had two intervenors who came and gave us points. You, you are proposing that we arrange a, a meeting with these two intervenors?
With, with?
Just one?
Just one.
Just one?
Okay.
Should we actually mention his name?
Ross, Ross and Karen Corning.
Ross and Karen.
I'll, I'll say it right out, I have no issue with that. I just feel that we just, I know they were upset when they left here that night.
Yes, yes.
And I really feel that we need to really hear how they really feel, how it was even done, how they were even notified. It's just, things were just kinda thrown out at them. I know if it was me, I'd be very upset too, if it was my property and didn't even know it was done. I just feel we owe them a time, that's all. We can table it, I'm not saying let's throw it out the door.
Okay.
I just feel we should table it till next month.
Okay, and, 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 and of course, from what I understand, we should put in, in place a step where we wanna make those individuals, who's a council or whatever. So, uh, uh, any, you have a, you have a motion to table?
I make the motion to table it till after we meet with the Cornings.
With Mr., yeah. Seconded? Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Any questions for Alex, he's here, concerning that topic?
Are we allowed to table it, Alex, till the next meeting?
Then, any worship?
Go ahead, absolutely, yes.
Absolutely, Councilor Allison, you, you could table that kind of motion. It, it, it just, for the purposes of the committee planning act, you only need to make a decision on the bylaw within six months of your public hearing. So, that's the only time limit you have, so as long as you do it in six months of that date, you got plenty of time, so, yeah.
Could that one property be exempted this time and still be passed?
Uh...
You'd rather do them all at once?
Well, yeah, and, yeah, as I said in the report, if, if you, if you're gonna make a change to the bylaw, meaning like you take a, take a, make a substantial change, make a, change to one of the property zoning, then, then what I would recommend is you send it back to the CRA for this month, and the next month's meeting you come back with a revised bylaw. So, you could do that. So, if you're going to do that, I don't know if you want to go back to that motion to rescind the tabling, you could...
Can I just, which property is that, Councilor Allison?
The Corning property.
What number?
Site two.
Site two, so, uh, would it satisfy your concerns if we actually moved to exempt this site two from the bylaw? Can we do that, Alex?
You can. Now, the, there are a couple of things which staff has raised to your attention with that. So, this, this site was originally zoned residential in 2010, and 2018, it was inadvertently rezoned to a agricultural rural zone, and when they were notified by mail that their properties couldn't be changed back to the residential as it was supposed to be, they had the understanding they might have factored their, their taxes and were opposed to it. The, the, the challenge though, with, with going back to the agriculture rural for this particular property is it actually goes against the municipal plan. So, what staff had advised is if you're going to exempt this property from the, the update, that you should be looking at, at making municipal plan reflective as well, because right now the municipal plan is supposed to be a residential property. It was supposed to be a residential property all the way back since 20, 2010, and it was a residential property in 2010, it was just in 2018 there was that mapping error. So, if council wishes to put this property into an agricultural designation, as I believe was the wish of the property owners, the best process would be then to, probably, put this, put this bylaw on a, on a tabling, look at that municipal plan, perhaps amend the property as well for the miss, in the municipal plan so that it's properly designated agricultural, and then bringing this bylaw back with this showing as an agricultural property. So, it's a little bit of a, a multi-step process. If you just take this bylaw in of itself and then you exempt, you delete it off the, the list of properties being updated, you can, but I wouldn't miss, I wouldn't recommend that just from a, you know, compatibility with all your bylaws standpoint. So, it is a fairly complex thing, and I apologize if it's hard to follow what I'm saying, but there's a few moving pieces with this.
My understanding was that we can, we can make a motion to amend the bylaw by exempting the property number two.
Yes.
Okay, and that, that, that would be in compliance with all the other recommendations that we received from CRA, but essentially, we are rejecting at this moment by, by exempting it, the one that you have, you have, you have proposed.
Yeah, and certainly council can choose to do that. The, the difference, I think, with the, the, the other updates, we were looking at just the parcel lines, making sure those were reflecting correctly. So, I think that's what CRA was calling for, is to make sure you just get those correct on the map. It's not a substantial change because the parcel lines aren't substantial to the map. When you change some of these properties zoned though, that is, that would be considered substantial in, in a change, so that, that's when you kinda have to look at it a little bit more in depth. But no, certainly if council wishes just to delete this off the bylaw and proceed, that is council's prerogative, they can do that, so.
And we can actually review the thing back when we're gonna do it at the municipal plan?
Absolutely, yeah, you can.
So, we have the, the, the opportunity to actually address the concerns?
Yeah.
Later on. So, I, I, I'm just trying to see if, if, I just want to actually put a motion to actually exempt property number two from the bylaw and let the, the, and vote on the bylaw. Am I allowed to put a motion? I put a motion on the floor to exempt property number two, that Councilor Allison expressed concern to have a discussion with, with the owners before, um... Can I have a, this motion seconded?
I'll second it.
Um, all in favor?
No.
No?
I think we need to, of all, council's...
We need to meet, we're gonna meet with him first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
He said to exempt the, the property two, so that, his property wouldn't, wouldn't be a part of the equation until the next time we discuss it.
Unless it's a part of you, which we'll discuss. Uh, Councilor, Councilor, could you, like I said?
Six months. Don't have to do it right now?
You don't have to do it right now.
So, my recommendation would be to have consultation with the landlords and then proceed. Rather than delete them at this time, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that route.
So, will you move with a motion?
It would be like my...
I would say, yes, I heard table would be.
Just tabling until?
More discussion.
Okay, so, we have, we have the, the motion from Councilor Allison to actually table it until the next meeting.
I'll second it. I'll second Councilor, Councilor Allison, yes.
Okay, to town, and, all in favor?
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Update on well number two project?
Just looking at the picture. One well, as much as I was...
Just to give council an update, previously, we would have had a special meeting on August the 18th, just on preliminary budgeting for this, this rebuild project. At that point, it was $58,000. So, I've just circulated it out to council, just an update of what the running estimated is right now. So, we are looking at a difference of this project in, in excess of $22,022, so brings up the total project to just, just over $80,000. You can see line-by-line items of what that actually is, so I guess what I'm looking for from council is, is either moving ahead with this project. If we are to do that, then it's the allocating the, the remainder of the gas tax top-up for 2021, which is 22,537, um, to the water sewage capital fund earmarked for this project.
Any questions?
Are we still gonna be able to do another project? More bridge?
Yes, yeah.
Any other question? Any decision?
You wish a motion?
We have one more item, we don't need to update, right?
Uh, I, I would need a, an approval from council with a motion to...
For what?
To, for the remainder allocation of the gas tax top-up.
Oh, there is a, okay, so, uh...
So, that total is $22,537, which is unallocated from the gas tax 2021 top-up, so taking that unallocated remainder and allocating it towards water sewage capital project, earmarking it for this project.
Okay, so this is what you're proposing for?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to use the additional money to do the bridge.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item nine C, declaration of surplus properties?
Yes, worship, this is, this for the, the 2014 Ford pickup truck. We have replaced that truck this year with the acquisition of a new 2021 Ford pickup. So, this would be basically making this truck surplus so that we can, we can tender it off. Estimated value we have on this is $7,000. It's a 2014 Ford F-150 pickup truck, truck, five liter, four by four, with an eight-foot box, and... box and, uh, just over 118,000 kilometers. So, um, with council's approval, uh, what we would do is, uh, we would then, um, put out a tendering, um, people would put in their, their max, their max bid, um, and then we would do an opening of this, uh, of this bid, um, and then it'd be, of course, the, go into the highest bidder. Um, so estimated value right now is at 7,000. So that would be the starting bid.
Soon as possible?
Pardon me?
Could be taken out of service soon as possible?
Um, yeah, pretty much. Yeah. It still may remain an asset of ours, so, um, as soon as we would issue the, the, uh, the tendering.
Yeah.
We'd probably take it out at that point. Yeah.
I'll make that motion to tender that truck out.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Public presentations, appearances. Is there anyone who wants to speak? Uh, moving to item thirteen, statements by members of council, and we'll start from the right. Council Allison?
Okay. Uh, to the mayor and council, um, this is my report for the summer concert series that were held here on Thursday evenings at seven o'clock. All proceeds benefited the St. George area food bank. The canteen was held by the food bank. They looked after it all. Um, we did 50/50 draws, donation, and a basket was donated from running out of time, and there was tons of food donated. The grand total that I, that we brought in this year was $1,448, and that was for a four-night concert. So I felt that it was really, really, um, attended. We had anywheres between sixty to 100 people in. Um, I would like just to say thank you to Gary Sturgeon for all this help helping me setting up the groups, um, to Counselor Colton for helping me at the door, for, um, Counselor Rubin for helping me take down the chairs at night, and for his wife, Mrs. Sandra Rubin, for helping at the door also. All the residents seemed to enjoy themselves, and they all said they would like to try to see something happen in the fall, um, maybe have one night a month or something for concerts here, and I've already been approached by a couple of groups that they would like to come. So that is, I would just like to say a big thank you to the community for supporting it and hope everyone will attend any other music events we have. That's all I have, your worship.
Sir, I'd like to thank Mr. Armstrong for his presentation. The data has been collected over a long period of time, the last couple of years, and it certainly proves there is an issue in several areas in town for sure. Uh, three weeks ago, I also met the commander of J Division, and I did touch on that topic after the meeting with him. He brought to highlight a few other things in that committee. I will be there to voice my concerns, and there are several things that need to be addressed concerning that going forward, and hopefully, we can come up with something that will work for us.
I already talked about the district.
Um, so I, one of my mandates for running for council was to strengthen, uh, student involvement in our community, specifically through volunteering. So we know that volunteering helps improve academic performance. We also know that it can help, um, develop a better appreciation as a whole, our community. Um, so as you know, we had Summerfest, and like, events such as this are a community effort. There was one particular volunteer that really stood out, and her name was Olivia Coiman. Uh, she's a grade eight student at Funday High School, and, you know, if she's a representative of, if she's a, a representative of the younger generation, then I, I like to think we have a very bright future ahead of us. Um, one thing that we can do as a council and as, like, other representatives in the community is to think of ways in which we can get the youth more involved, more integrated, uh, in our town, whether that be through volunteering or, or something else. Um, at the Anglican Church, there's something called, um, Community Builders. It's organized by Reverend, uh, Mary Langmaid, I believe, and Rebecca McSheverry. So if anyone would like to attend, uh, these meetings, feel free to, to go. Um, and that's all I've done.
Thank you. Council Armstrong?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and of course, I'd like to thank my husband for the time that he spent, uh, in doing the, um, information and the presentation on the speeding. As I said earlier, it was something that I, was part of my platform, and I'm willing to join him on that, uh, committee to bring back to the council, if I'm allowed. Um, and I, I would certainly invite any other fellow council members to, to join in that and gather up, uh, the information that we need to do to make that difference in St. George.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that, um, COVID has actually changed a lot of things this summer, um, with regards to our festivities. So I, I feel very, very, um, good that, um, we all pulled together, uh, the council, we had a lot of volunteering from the council, uh, worked late days, late nights, um, I, I worked very much close with Sam, uh, dismantling things at night when the, when the, 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 agitation, of course, yes, of course, yes, so I feel very good about it. Um, I feel good about the fact that, um, uh, for first time, uh, this, uh, this, um, this year, we're able to put on, um, shows on both indoor venues and outdoor venues, and to bring, um, kinds of cultural events which have not been brought before. And if the fact that St. Andrews had chosen to put jazz and, um, and classical music a few weeks after us, I feel that's the greatest compliment, because imitation is the greatest compliment, and I, I, I feel very positive about that. I want to say that definitely we have, um, I want to pick up on, on, on what Counselor Detorek said about the need to actually, um, strengthen our ranks of volunteers, and that is something that as a council, we should be looking forward as we move forward. Um, the fact that we had a very strong volunteer should be an example, and actually, I, I'm pleased that the, the town gave me a check of appreciation, which I signed, to actually give her $100 for working about one and a half days or two days late dismantling, uh, making the cut in the hat, uh, helping the seniors here with the, the painting class. So I believe that we have an obligation to try to encourage that more. Um, and, um, I just want to, uh, just want to, um, I just want to actually take the opportunity to actually, uh, publicly acknowledge in this meeting, um, the donation of Dr. Melanie Egan on August 12th, uh, to donate a piece of land on, uh, Porter Street, uh, that can be used by the town, uh, to build a library and other, and other, and other functions, including housing. Um, and, um, I, I, I feel very thankful about it. Um, there have been some, some follow-up and due diligence because part of the offer was to actually, the town to acquire a piece of land which is attached to that one, uh, which belongs to the Irving Oil, and our CIO was doing the due diligence of actually, um, um, finding out if there are any sort of environmental concerns, and he established that, uh, the land is clear from any environmental concerns without any caveats or, or things to be followed up. I believe that we should be able to actually in the next few weeks, or maybe month or two, be able to actually find the right person in Irving Oil, which is a very big corporation, who may be dealing with, um, interfaces with municipal affairs and that, uh, community matters, and see where they stand with respect to fulfilling the condition of, uh, of letting us acquire the remaining land. So that is all that I have. Thank you very much all for coming. That declares the meeting. Ah, I, I need a motion, actually. I need a motion to, um...
Motion, Jerry.
Thank you.[1791.33]